...support this evening. Superintendent Gray.
Just two quick notes. One, just noting tomorrow at seven o'clock at the high school is the ninth annual holiday variety show. It's five dollars a day. It's put on by the high school music department as a fundraiser for a trip for one of the choirs to go to New York late this year. So I invite everyone to come out for that. At the start of that present or that concert, we'll also be presented with a check from the Bank of Ann Arbor for the event they had earlier this October where they donated a hundred dollars for their check account that was open. So we'll be accepting that check. I'm at the school tomorrow evening. So if you want to do that. And then I'd like to thank Todd Carter for his services. He's not able to be here tonight, but this will be his last meeting. So I think he deserves his thank you.
Anything from board members?
I'd just like to recognize the interact club from the high school for last November, the 22nd, they went to Habitat for Humanity in Ipsy and worked day to day of service to that. I think it's an excellent cause.
Variety, I think, at the high school. There's powder, pub, volleyball. Is that correct, Josh? Are you raising funds for food gatherers? You don't know?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
What time is it, Josh? Do you know what time it is?
First thing is six thirty.
Six thirty, okay.
Anything else from Belkin's side?
I did make it to the, the, um, um, Selenary School.
The foundation meeting, yeah.
Meeting this morning. I didn't talk anything to record. Were you there?
Yeah, we were there and they rolled through. They talked a little bit about the Snow Blast event that's coming up, that's major event they have just coming up on January 31st. Tickets are now available if you go into supportfas.org. Again, it's a large event next year. We talked a lot. It was kind of a business meeting. There was a lot of discussion about kind of next steps. They will be having elections for two outgoing positions in particular to be two of the people coming to vote. That process now.
Just a quick mention. With the football team making it to Ford Field, it was, I think those of us who went to that game were probably a little bit shocked and a little bit surprised at the number of people who came. And we estimate that there were probably 12,000 people there supporting Celine. And you know, part of the residual benefit of that is the band got to play for an extra month. And as we have on our agenda tonight, the video class was able to go down and practice their craft down there. So we're looking forward to that this evening. And with that, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed. So move chief and second from trustee praise. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Schedule reports. We have our state champion girls team.
I'd like to invite the coaches and swimmers and divers that are here tonight to come forward to the podium. They are the Division One, uh, St. Shee's Girls Swim and Dive Team Champions. You know, it was an outstanding run and I wanted to have a chance for them to tell a little bit about the season, a little bit about the state meet itself.
So we went into the meet not quite sure of what was going to happen. We knew we had the big chance of winning, but we knew it was going to be a close meet. And in the end, it came down to the last break quarter three relay. And we all had phenomenal swimmers on that relay. We knew we'd step up and they did what they did. They did what they needed to do and we won the meet by five points, beating Mercy Farmington Hills. And I think that was the first time we've won states in four years. So it was very exciting, very, very exciting moment. And I don't think any of us will ever forget it.
I just want to thank you all for having us here tonight, recognizing our accomplishments. And I'd like to say it goes all the way back to like Mrs. Warner's son, swimmer a long time ago. It was one of our first swimmers to have a great deal of success.
And daughters.
And.
And their daughters.
And daughters. But it goes back a long time. There's a lot of people in this community that work very hard towards something like this. From the work that you folks do to our athletic director, Rob White, the parents in our community, very supportive. We get everything we need in terms of support from our administration and from the people around us. That allows us to be successful. We just try to teach the lessons to the girls and they learn those lessons about perseverance, dedication. We're certainly some of the first ones there every morning and some of the last ones to leave in the evening. And we put a lot of hard work into it and it is a representation of our community. We're very proud to represent this community in that way at a very high level. So thank you all for recognizing that and we'll try and keep it up and keep coming back every year.
Just to recognize the captains, Sophie Breitman, Michaela Loney, Kelsey Holmberg, and Alex McPherson, Coach Brunti, also Coach Loveland, Jeff Craig, Maggie Stevens, and Wamla Chu. Coach Brunti was the Division One Swim Coach of the Year. Coach Craig was the Division One Dive Coach of the Year. SEC champs, obviously state champs. Amy Stevens was state champion in the one meter dive. She alone accounted for 51 points in the swim meet. We were also the 400 free relay state champions. Every girl that's been on a swim team since 2009 has had a chance to experience a state championship during their time at Celine. And, but I think what counts most is that this team has a GPA of 3.6. And I think those who have had students involved in swimming and Coach Brunti talked on it. It's a demanding sport in terms of training and time. And certainly these students have modeled themselves as the type of student athletes that we have in Celine, that they're able to get it done in the classroom and also get it down in their sport. So again, congratulations on a great season. Just one other note on academic performance. We finished the trimester and the varsity athletes who participated in the fall sport had a GPA of 3.25. And that's outstanding. So, you know, it's the well-rounded individual that we develop and certainly support is part of that. Okay, and now our video.
Yeah, I'd like to invite Nate Bush from SHS Today and Video Production course at the school to come up and talk a little bit about their experiences at Ford Field over the Thanksgiving weekend.
So I brought, first of all, I want to say thank you very much for inviting me and my class to come to address you guys today. We have four representatives from the various programs that we have in the video production program. I want to quickly just kind of give you a quick little overview of what classes we have available at the high school. So I teach three different classes. Video Production One, which is an entry level class. Video Production Two, which is kind of the next level. And then Video News Production, which is part of the South and West Washington Consortium. And we actually have two sections of that this year, which is new. And it will be explained a little bit as we go along. We tried to provide as many photos and videos as we possibly could for this and keep it brief. So I want to invite first Nathaniel Mack. He goes by Mack. We'll call him Nathaniel. We get in trouble with that all the time. I want to invite Mack to kind of talk about some of the opportunities he's had in the program. Yeah?
Right. Um, I'm Mack. Uh, I don't really know where, sorry. I guess when I was a freshman, I took the Video Production One class, this tall ago. And I kind of fell in love with video. And then in my next year, I took Video Production Two and Video News Production, which wasn't totally allowed. And then I'm in my second year of Video News Production this year, so three years of video experience. And I've gotten tons of stuff out of it. In my freshman year, I got to work with the Ann Arbor News Channel and helped them film a live, I think it was live, one of our football games, the homecoming game, I think, right? Yeah. I've gotten to film tons of other football games on my own and with like a big group of people, multiple cameras, you know. I've been to three video conferences in Lansing now, and we're going to a fourth in the springtime. And then obviously Ford Field just week two ago. And it's been a ton of fun. I've loved every part of it. It's always been a really great experience. I've gotten tons out of it. I think I've grown a lot as a person because of it, because it's really had me, like with, especially with the news production classes with SHS Today, I've had to really kind of mature and become able to take responsibilities. It's been a lot of fun and a lot of stress and I wouldn't give it up for the world.
Now I'd like to invite, I mean, we had, by the way, we took 13 students to Ford Field. And these four were all involved in that process. And I want to invite Cooper Whitley and Mary Mitchell to talk a little bit about their experiences at the event.
Like we've, in Video News Production, we always film all of our home football games. And that's always a ton of fun. So when Mr. Bush told us that we were going to be able to go to Ford Field to film the state game, I personally, being not only a video person, but also a huge football fan, was ecstatic. And, as you can see, so, yeah, this was, like, I was the first person to jump on board, to like go to Ford Field and do this. And it was, and the atmosphere of shooting in a stadium like Ford Field as opposed to shooting in our home stadium is completely different, especially considering the number of people who were there and all the people on the sidelines. And it was incredible. It was completely new experience. It was amazing. And I think one of my favorite parts actually was getting to talk to all of the other photographers who are also on the sidelines and talking to them and kind of getting a feel for what they were doing, following them around a little bit, you know, seeing what they were up to. But it was definitely a mind blowing, amazing experience that I'm definitely going to remember for a long time.
Cooper, how about you? What'd you do?
I also did what Mary did. Just videoed it down on the field. Biggest experience Video News Production could have for Celine. Biggest difference was shooting for at Celine High School football field and then going to Ford Field for states, shooting at Ford Field. Lot of experience doing it there than at Celine.
As well as shooting at Ford Field, lots of different opportunities that we have, I want to introduce Lexi McCluskey, who is involved in SHS Today in a little bit different way.
I'm Lexi McCluskey. I, it's my first year in the Video News Production Program, but I am currently in an internship with Chase Stanton for this trimester and next trimester also.
Through SCTN.
Yeah, through SCTN. And I'm also a producer for SHS Today. And currently, we are working on a Christmas special that will be aired December 19th. And it's going to have the Holiday Parade featured on it. It's going to also have the Holiday Variety Show presented by the choir featured on it. And it will also have sort of like a Christmas comparison between students at Harvest who are asked what they want for Christmas to high schoolers who, what they want for Christmas to sort of give it like a different imagination to it.
It's going to be you.
Also, just like, it's a really cool opportunity being a producer because like, it's just, it gives you a different feel on things because everybody brings something different to the table. So even being a producer, it's like, I learn things than, more than they learn from me. So I learned from them more. So it's pretty awesome being a producer and, yeah, that's another.
So right now, we're mentioning a lot of different shows. Right now, I'd introduce the three shows that we're currently juggling between. Video News Production, second hour is producing SHS Today, which we've just touched upon. And then fifth hour, I have through the consortium, we're starting up a new show this year called Hornet Nation. And also, I have a group of six Lincoln students. And that's a big enough group that we were actually able to produce their show. And so we're actually making a third show here called Splitter View. Came up with that. And we've kind of created that show from the ground up. These two shows are brand new this year. And those are going to be debuting next week as well. Let's show some videos. So Mack put together a great piece about what we've been doing in SHS Today. And this kind of explains where it's been.
Oftentimes during the first trimester, I get asked, where is SHS Today? Why is there no show? Hi, my name is Nathaniel Mack. I'm a member of the SHS Today team. And today I will be answering the golden question, where is the show? SHS Today is a new show produced by the students of Celine High School, all about the school and the Celine community. So the question is, where is the show during the first trimester? I talked to Chris McKee, one of the new members, about what he's doing to prepare for the show.
There's a lot of basic steps that we need to go through about like using the tricaster, anchoring, camera positions, the monitor, sound, directing, producing.
Every year, a select group of students returns to the class to work on the show for a second year. Alec Clark, one of these students, told me about what he is doing in preparation of the new year.
I guess I hope to become a better on-air talent, you know, and maybe making it more personable and more, I guess, real would be the right word.
SHS Today could not be made without one teacher who runs the whole show from behind the scenes. Mr. Bush, the executive producer of SHS Today, told me all about how he's preparing everyone for the new year.
So in the first trimester, we train the students in all the different aspects of producing media. Then we progress into doing a story, actually producing a story. We're actually pulling our sports segments out of SHS Today. It'll be the debut of a show called Hornet Nation. The goal of that show is to kind of dig deeper into what's happening in the athletic areas of Celine High School. So look for some new things in terms of the look and maybe the feel of the show.
As you prepare for a new year, get excited for some cool new stuff and look for our new show in December. I'm Nathaniel Mack, back to you in the studio. Wait, that's not right. See you in December.
All right, so there was that. And then if you didn't see it, this is the pilot show for Hornet Nation. This is the first show we had. Just going to give a little bit of that because it's about seven minutes long, so I'll just give it a couple seconds.
Hey, Celine, I'm Patrick Cannavan.
And I'm Kayla Sellers.
We are proud to welcome you to our preview episode of Hornet Nation.
This show will be your ticket to Celine High School Athletics. From game scores to what it takes to be a varsity athlete, we will be your number one source for Celine sports.
For our first show, we'd like to introduce you to two new segments, In Their Shoes and Clip to Clip.
Without further ado, let's get started.
So if you're interested in seeing more, I invite you to go to vimeo.com/SHSvideo. That's where you can see all our productions. I have a website, mrbushmedia.com. If you'd like, go there. Follow us on Twitter at SHS Today or me at SHS Mr. B. Thank you very much for supporting SHS Video Production. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it. Thank you. Great experience. We have a number of action items this evening. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the 2015 Board of Education meeting dates as submitted by Superintendent Gray. So move. Secretary Hyman, trustee Del. Any discussion?
Continues to follow our same format, which is the second, fourth Tuesday of every month with one meeting in July, August, and December. There's non-issue enrollment to spring break as we're going to have some previous year. Of just one, one piece of information, September 8th is our first meeting kind of of the school year. It's actually the first day of school. Labor Day is late and that first meeting will be on the same day as the first day of school.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the board's stipends for 2014 as submitted by Superintendent Gray. So move chief and a second from trustee Pannas. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the adoption of a new high school course, Computer Science Fundamentals, as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Lodge.
Let's first discuss the overall process and how.
Let's, let's, so move. Trustee Del, hey, do we have a second? Trustee Pannas.
So with the adoption of the new course at the high school, one of the things that we think is very important is that our teachers take action on ideas and courses that they feel are going to help kids move forward and look at new things all the time. So even though we have financial difficulties, we want to keep moving forward with different courses. So each year, teachers submit course proposals to their departments and they discuss how would this course fit in with the department. And this particular one would be in the math department for Computer Science Fundamentals. And it's a, it's a course that would help students that struggle a bit in math still be able to get involved in computer science, which is a really important field. And we want to have greater access to students to have an opportunity to take it. And so in essence, that's what it would be. The course is summarized in this handout that you have there. About a $15 cost to run it, largely with some tax costs and some of the technology pieces, but something that you could certainly afford to run. And I think there's value here in that course.
Go ahead.
The process then, so if the teacher turns it into their department, they discuss it, and then it goes?
Then it goes, you're right, there's another step. Then it goes to the executive council at the high school, where, which largely consists of department chairs. And they discuss courses and how they fit together. Because anytime you run a new course, that is potentially taking away from another course. Because we're going to generally stick with the line of about 25 students at least to run a class. So, you know, if you're taking 25 or more students and they're going to go into Computer Science Fundamentals, how does that fit in with another class that is going to run? And so the department discusses that and says, well, is there a place for this to fit? That's brought to the executive council to discuss that same thing. And then ultimately it moves up to our level. So that's, that's the first one.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the adoption of a new high school course, Graphic Novel, as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Lodge. So move. Secretary Hyman with a second from Vice President Peck.
So Graphic Novel, this is a one trimester class inside the English department. And all of these courses being submitted here are one trimester classes and they're all elective classes. So I should have prefaced it with a "f". And graphic novels are a way that is, again, helping students meet a need to get into literature, but an easier access to text. Romeo and Juliet as a graphic novel. And you might say, well, is it comic books? It does present pictures and a more interactive way to get at the text and the literature. But kids really enjoy looking at text this way. And this is an opportunity for students that want to tackle some of the more complex literature in this way, another opportunity to do that. So again, I see it fits a need within the department. And the English department agrees as well. About a $500 price tag to get a variety of different novels for that to learn.
I didn't see, is there a list of the novels that they're going to use or just?
It would, it would largely be just parts that, we would piece that together in terms of what specifically they wanted to read and what was available too. But obviously within the sphere of what we're doing in a normal literature class is important.
Well, you said that the same type of material from the graphic novels as you would, say, with the Romeo and Juliet examples, like would the language still be the same in the graphic novel or would it be simplified?
I mean, so often, often it's simplified. But it's not always taken exactly. It depends what the text is. But they're not, they're taking it in a context just to make it the access a little bit easier for.
Like the main themes and the symbolism and all that is still going to be in the novel?
Right, right.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just familiar with a young man who studied opera via graphic novels when he was about 13. I thought that was interesting. He was from Canada. Sounds good to me.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the adoption of a new high school course, Exploration and Expression Through Puppetry and Mask, as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Lodge. Do we have a group motion? Trustee Del, aye.
Support.
Seconded by trustee Pannas.
So with this, of course, it's run through the, it may be a performing arts credit. And it's a way to look at, again, another way for expression. And, you know, students, you say, well, if they take this class, what would it potentially take place of? I mean, these are classes such as stagecraft, acting, and kids need to make choices on what they want to take. And this would be an offering within that department. And again, if a class like this runs, maybe another section doesn't run. But that's already discussed amongst the performing arts teachers. So again, this is where there's balance. And not all these classes do run. We often do put courses in the catalog. And if there's not enough to run, not enough students of interest that year, we don't run every class. So this is one that the performing arts department wants to try. And we'd like to give them opportunity, very low cost to this.
Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the adoption of a new high school course, The Bible in the Western World, as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Lodge. So move. Secretary Hyman with a second from trustee Pannas.
So this course would be run through the English department. We do right now offer world religion through the social studies department at the high school. And we also teach world religion in the social studies department at the middle school. So this is a little different take on that. And the English department discussed about, is there interest for students to be able to access the Bible as a literature type of course? And the department feels that there is that interest. It's an approved text in terms of being able to teach it in a way that is not solely focused on religion. It's focused on the literature and the history behind it as it influences other works. And so this is a course that there is interest in. And we'd like to see that opportunity to run.
Questions or comments from board members?
So I feel like that's what obviously, obviously be one that more people are wary about because it does have the Bible, like it's mainly focused on Bible. And here at Celine, we're all about equality and fairness. So would it be clear that it is just taking the Bible in a literature sense? Because the way the title or the course name is The Bible in the Western World, it just seems like you're just teaching about the Bible and not making it into part of the literature.
That it would need to be clarified. Yeah, we certainly, we'd have a bigger description in the course catalog. And obviously, our counselors would be aware of how the course would run as well. And certainly, there's going to be that discussion about how that would be taught a certain way. And the course text works from a literature standpoint. And it's been to make sure that that happens. But I can understand what you're saying, that it depends on how you are looking at it in terms of the initial title.
Right. Because I remember hearing about this potentially being a class at the end of. of last year, and even then, I already heard different views about it, and how some people seemed not happy with it. So as long as it was clear that it wasn't for religious content, then I think it would be okay.
Right, and certainly, I understand. Right, and it's an elective course. Again, if there wasn't enough interest in a class, it certainly wouldn't run. And we wouldn't say, well, you know, there's 12 kids that wanted, 12 students wanted to take it, and we're gonna push it forward. We would not do that. There would need to be enough student interest generated.
How many students are in the world religions?
26 is the course right now that will run with Mr. Kuzin later on in the year. At middle school level, the students all are exposed to it, but it's one unit, it's not the entire, you know, social.
So they probably have, if it ran, it would be similar numbers?
Well, it would need a certain threshold at least before it would be before or. And that's the case with all of these classes. I mean, every so often, we are running pilot programs that don't need 25, but in general, you know, we're not gonna entertain running classes when they're really low numbers.
Are we taking other things out of the course catalog as new things come in, or are we?
You often, well, generally, we don't do that. We leave those opportunities as long as we have enough spots within the department to be able to offer it. So what would happen is after the sign up happens, and the course catalog is looked through, and students have all signed up, then that balancing takes place, and the English department looks at what all the course requests are from students, and then determines, well, who's gonna teach this? And after that's all sort of out, it naturally takes care of certain classes not running or certain sections. And that happens every year, regardless of new classes.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a litany of objections to this course, but basically, it comes down to just a hardcore, I've tried to think about it and be as open as I can in heart and mind, but it comes down to the idea of separation of church and state, and I just, in looking at the literature, I look at the true and false questions, and you're studying the Bible. I also see comments about literature in there as well. I could say more, but I don't wanna waste your time. It just, I would be opposed to that course. I'm not crazy about the way it looks at women. There's just a number of issues for me.
I'm also opposed to this, and I wanna preface my remarks that, you know, I don't wanna be viewed as micromanaging the administration, and that I think this is well-intended, and that I don't wanna be a curriculum guru. That's not my core competency. But like Trustee Freeze, I have some concerns. And I think there's a lot of things we can teach our students, and this has the potential to tread and perhaps cross a line on what should be a parental responsibility. That religion is something that's very personal to people. I believe it should be kept at the kitchen table or in the pulpit on Sunday. Because at some point, there'll be an interpretive discussion in the classroom, and there'll be an instructor, and there'll be students, and people will be giving their comments. And that may create some friction within that classroom. And inevitably, it'll get back to the parent, and then we have parents come into a board meeting, and I can see that scenario playing out. But it's just my belief that there are other things we can teach our students. Let's leave religion where it should be, and that I think this would be a great college course at the freshman or sophomore level. When you go off to college and you kinda question your beliefs, that's probably the time to take a course like this. And that, but to have it in high school, when parents are still teaching their kids their values, and that this has the potential to create conflict there. And I think it's a place that the public schools need not go.
I would like to give my opinion, and I think the Bible is actually one of the oldest and most published books in the whole world. And I think there are great references to history and geography and literature and all of that stuff that is in the Bible. And there are other books that, you know, are gonna be controversial too, but I think it's because of the separation, that it's not religion that's being taught. It can't be. I mean, there is a separation between religion and state, and I think it's a very well-written course, I think, when I read the book. You know, I reviewed the materials, and I talked to several different people in different districts that have had the curriculum, and they said it was very well-received, and it was presented very well, and very non-religious based, but more literature-based, and it was very positive. So I'm in favor of it, because I feel like, I mean, no other book has been published as often in as many languages, so.
Any other questions or comments by board members?
Sure. New course proposal, as Mr. Grayden would say, is really not my wheelhouse, but I would say, when I did look at this in the packet that had, you know, Bible, right away, that throws everybody into a place that we gotta keep that away from the students. Well, after reading the syllabus, I went and also talked to Ms. Denzen, had a good conversation, asked questions. I feel pretty comfortable with the way the class is gonna be taught, if it is. And I feel like the separation is there. It is taught nationwide, so it's out there, and we're not blazing trail. So I think if there are students that want this, I think it's a good opportunity.
And another worry is that people are gonna, there're gonna be people that take this course because they want the discussion, and I think that the teachers who are willing to teach this course are gonna run it so people can easily and openly discuss the Bible. But then there's also gonna be people who are very, like, hardline Christian and very, they wanna take the course just because they want to learn more about the Bible, or they want to express their views in a different way than people who would wanna take the course for literature would express it. And I feel like that would create conflict in the class, so that would be one of my biggest concerns about the class. Like, we don't really wanna create a lot of tension between our students.
Good point. Any other questions or comments? Before calling the vote, I'll say this, that in my three years, this issue, I think, was vetted more fully by the entire board. I think everybody took a hard look, looked at course materials, in the case of the chief, went out and actually conducted his own research face-to-face, and we may have reached different conclusions, but I think it shows that when we get an issue that comes before us that has a little gravity to it, that we did our homework on this one.
I think it's good that there is that discussion here, to be able to talk that through, you know? People, different comfort levels, that's okay.
Yeah. Anything else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post a nay? Nay. Recorded vote is four in favor, two opposed, with one absent. The motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the best practices incentive resolution as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Warner. Do we have a motion?
A move.
Trustee Delhae, and a second?
Support.
Trustee Finesse.
I think this is our third or fourth time around for best practice funding. In order to get the $50 per student, we need to meet seven of nine criteria. We actually meet eight of the nine criteria this year. So once we provide the resolution to the state, and then I also have to have the out-of-state travel and the purchase card information posted on our website, then we should start receiving the funding, so that should be the best way to do it.
Any questions or comments from board members? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post a nay? Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve first food service bid protest procedure policy as submitted by Superintendent Grayden. Do we have a motion?
Support.
Trustee Delhae, second from Vice President Hepp. Superintendent Grayden?
Yeah, this policy, as you see today, really is somewhat of a procedural policy to have in place prior to the next action item related to food service. And I'll have Assistant Superintendent Ellis to talk about specifics of the protest procedure and why it's necessary.
The next action item, as Superintendent Grayden cited, is the approval of the RFP to Chartwells, who was one of the five people that responded to our request for proposals. We submitted that request, as you recall, back in early September, and we had five companies that responded to the request. The process is very, very prescriptive from the Michigan Department of Education, because there are federal dollars involved. And so because of that, there's a rubric that we received, unlike maybe some of the other bids that we've done in the past, where we have tremendous latitude. This is a very prescriptive process, and the scoring rubric was in your packet as well. Even if you follow the rubric to a T and you engage the Department of Ed as we have throughout the process, the companies that are not awarded the bid do have the right to file a protest, and therefore, we need a protest policy in place to be able to deal with that if it were to occur.
The policy before you tonight is modeled after the Monroe County policy, and that policy has been, they've had several transitions in terms of food service providers in that county, but this policy is, we stood protest at the time of that. So we're confident it's the right policy for us.
Questions or comments from board members? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post a nay? Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to accept the resolution for Chartwells as the food service management company as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Ellis. A move. Trustee Freeze with a second from Secretary Heinicke. Assistant Superintendent Ellis?
Just to reiterate again, the process began for us back in September. We had five companies that did respond. Assistant Superintendent Warner and I spent one of the Fridays that we had no school, sitting down with legal counsel reviewing these packets. The information binders we received from each of the companies was quite thorough. They were typically two-and-a-half, three-inch-thick binders that were accompanied with CDs. And so not only did we review those materials, we also shared that with legal counsel, and they compared them to the rubrics, so we had that rationale available to us. We scheduled presentations where all five companies came in and presented to a team of people from the district, brought food samples with them and whatnot. And after going through the Department of Ed rubric and consulting with them to make sure that we were following the process to a T, Chartwells emerged as the leader in that process, and so we're submitting that to you tonight for your consideration. Just to reiterate again, this is just for the management of food services, literally one person. The food service employees for the district will remain employees of the district, just be managed by somebody from Chartwells.
Questions or comments from board members?
I'd like to say that we used Chartwells in my last district, and was very happy with the quality of the food and the menus, and, you know, it stepped it up a notch.
Sure.
And so I'm excited to have Chartwells on board. I think that they have some good things for the kids, and we'll be happy.
Were they the low-cost better?
They were.
Okay. Yeah, just to clarify, it was brought up in prior discussion to me about, was Chartwells that company that was involved with the Michigan prison system that was having? And it was a different company. So just to assure everybody that, you know, Chartwells is not that other company. As Trustee Finesse said, they have a good reputation out there. I wanna thank you for your work that you put in on this. Questions or comments?
Start natives.
We're gonna talk about transition. The motion that you're passing this night, we hope, is to allow Superintendent Grayden and I to continue to negotiate with them to find a points of the contract, but transitioning right after the first of the year.
Did they decide to take over the concessions as part of the process?
Probably a good point to also interject, that Tracy Mulcair and Carrie O'Keefe in particular have done a fantastic job in this transitionary process. Tracy stepped in and has actually operated the food service department for us as an interim director, and Carrie O'Keefe stepped up from Heritage and moved over to the middle school, which was a big switch for her as well. So those two in particular, along with the rest of our staff, have just done a great job this fall.
And Tracy did a wonderful job in the concession stand, helping music boosters, you know, do that. It was awesome. So, you know, not just Tracy, but Tracy was there every week.
And to note, both of them, they will transition back to their original positions, so, yeah, they'll still move anywhere.
Both were happy to serve, both are also equally happy to go back.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post a nay? Motion carries. Discussion items, Policy Committee update?
At our last meeting, we are continuing to work on the religious holiday policy, and the ACH, our next meeting is scheduled for January 6th, and hopefully we'll have some new work.
Budget Committee update?
We have not had a Budget Committee meeting. We have one scheduled for next Wednesday, the 17th, at 4:30. So now that the, all the district contracts are signed, we're gonna play with the five-year plan, see where we stand, and start looking at those strategic goals, see what happens.
Start talking about a bond proposal also. Play the foundation for that. Chair will entertain a motion to authorize items A through E as part of the consent agenda. A move?
Support.
Vice President Hepp with a second, Trustee Finesse. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post a nay? Motion carries. Items scheduled on the next agenda, that'll be our first meeting of the year, so we will have our organization meeting prior to the beginning of a new meeting, where we will elect officers for next year. We will also swear in Mr. Tim Austin as our new board member, who will be joining us. This is the second opportunity for public comment. Members of the audience may address the board up to three minutes. Are there any members of the audience who wish to address the board this evening? Okay, the next meeting of the Board of Education will be on Tuesday, January 13th, 2015, at 6:30, right here at Leverett. And with that, the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Trustee Freeze, second from Trustee Finesse. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post a nay? Motion carries. We're done.